I'd like to welcome our visitors here. I see several people here today that I haven't seen here before, and I'm glad you all could The next item, which is normally not what we do, but we have an appointment for a city clerk to fill the unexpired term of Steve U-House. And I want to ask the council to please appoint Alex B. McDowell as our new city clerk treasurer.
Do it.
After a resolution, do that?
Roll call.
I thought you had it down at the bottom.
The roll call.
I'm sorry. Roll call.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Here.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
Get down.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
To go back to what I said out of order about appointing a new city clerk to fill the unexpired term of Steve U-House, and will we do that by resolution?
I'm sorry. Just wanted to let you know that there is a quorum for business.
Sorry, what?
There is a quorum for business.
So I guess we have a resolution to approve?
We have a... Let's see. Yes, we do.
So under this resolution, I make a recommendation that we approve Resolution Number 16-0912. Appoint Alex B. McDowell as our city clerk.
May I offer motion to approve 16-09112?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson, second by Councilman Fred Barton, to approve Resolution Number 16-0912 to appoint Alex B. McDowell, city clerk treasurer.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution Number 16-0912 to appoint Alex B. McDowell, city clerk treasurer.
Passes. Is approved.
Next item is minutes from the oath of office. Alex B. McDowell.
I have the right hand up there for me. Alex McDowell, in solemn and swayed. I have McDowell, in solemn and swayed. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Alabama. Constitution of the State of Alabama. So long as I remain a citizen thereof. So long as I remain a citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully and honestly. And that I will faithfully and honestly. Discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. Discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So there we go. So there we go. Congratulations.
Yes.
The next item is approval of minutes from the last two meetings.
Next motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Poole. Is there any discussion?
Are we voting on both means at one time or individually?
Individually.
So are we voting on the regular meeting first then?
The regular meeting first, yes, sir. August 22nd, 2016, regular meeting minutes. We have a motion from Councilman Cotton and a second from Councilman Poole. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The agenda is approved.
Next we have the approval of the minutes of the August 30th. I make a motion to approve August 30th, 2016, canvas of election.
We have a motion from Councilman Kerry Barton, a second by Councilman Fred Barton. And is there any discussion?
Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The August 30th, 2016 canvas of election meeting minutes are approved.
The next item is the agenda approved. Okay. And I'd like to make one change to that. We're just going to carry over into old business, the recreation board.
Carry over. Are there any other changes? What is the...
All those in favor.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed indicate by saying nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved.
And the new business, the first item, is approval of the accounts payable. I'm calling the city clerk.
Okay. Account... Do we have a...
Mayor.
No, there's no...
Why don't we have John Angel go over to beside that man and tell him what he needs to do? He needs to. No, he needs to, Congressman. He's fumbling through what he's trying to do. He's not got it. All right, go ahead.
Okay. The accounts payable...
Did we have a motion?
I made a motion. I made a motion to approve account payables. What is it? Okay.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton and a second by Councilman Watson. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes. Accounts payable are approved.
Next item, if you'd put up that next resolution.
You've got to get your resolution.
Yeah. It is a resolution to pass the approval of the 2017 city budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
With Cotton and Watson.
Okay, we have a... There's a motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Watson, to approve fiscal year budget approval resolution Number 16-0912-1.
Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The budget resolution Number 16-0912-1 is approved.
Next item is BFI Waste Services Agreement.
Yeah.
And we have another resolution for that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Didn't do that one.
This will be for the coming year, and it'll mean no additional cost to the citizens. Any increase in the cost will be borne by the city. So you have a motion by Councilman Cotton and a second by Councilman Barton.
Fred Barton.
Here.
Kerry.
Kerry.
Motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton.
Correction. Kerry.
Kerry Barton.
Kerry Barton.
Seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton to approve Waste Management Resolution Number
Is there any discussion?
This will be a three-year contract.
That's correct. Any further discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Waste Agreement Resolution Number 16-0912-2 is approved.
Next item is a resolution on a change in the travel and reimbursement policy for the employees of the City of Bruton, changing the amount from $40 a day not to exceed $45 a day in aggregate for the trip. And that is... That needs to be voted on.
Is it necessary to put a number on that resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. I make a motion to approve Resolution 16-0912-3.
Motion by Councilman Fred Barton, seconded by Councilman Watson, to approve Travel Reimbursement Policy Resolution 16-0912-3.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Joe Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Travel Policy Resolution 16-0912-3 is approved.
Next item we have is another resolution. Resolution is to appoint Ifor Jeffrey. We're going to redo, or the council is going to undertake to look at redoing, two different bond issues. First bond issue is one that we did when we first came into office, and with the reduction in the interest rates, without changing the terms or the amount, we can save approximately $400,000 to $450,000 with a term of bond. The second bond that we're going to be looking at is a bond that we are presently paying $550,000 a year, and he's going to advise Ifor Jeffrey if we pass this resolution, or advise us on the merits of that bond.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 16-0912-4.
Second.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
I think it was Chris Cotton, wasn't it?
Motion by Councilman Kerry Barton, seconded by Councilman Cotton, to approve Agreement Resolution Number 16-0912-4.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Agreement Resolution 16-0912-4 is approved.
Next item is an ordinance and a resolution. It's the Bruton City Board Education pledge discussion, and I call them City Attorney Ed Hands.
Thank you, Mayor. As all background, as you know, back in 2008, the city issued two series of warrants in order to raise necessary funds to construct and renovate our city schools. Both of these warrant transactions added up to $20 million. Right now, the amount owed on one series, the series 2008, remains at $10 million, and the amount owed on the 2008B warrants is $2,345,000. Currently, at this time, the City Board of Education has proposed to issue its own revenue warrants to pay off or refund this indebtedness. In connection with this transaction, the city will pass an ordinance and a resolution, the effect of which is that, under the cooperative funding agreement for this warrant issued by the Board of Education, that the city will pledge and pay to the City Board of Education at a mile equal to 25% of the 4% sales tax present being collected. And also, the city will continue to pay the Board of Education, what is known as the amendment eight tax, abhorrent tax, proceeds, which the city levies and collects for educational purposes at a rate of five mils. This abhorrent tax and the sales tax is something that's currently being paid over to the Board of Education to retire these series of warrants, but they're going to redo their own bond issue. But really, there's nothing new, as far as new monies are concerned, that will be taken out of the city's budget or its confidence that's not already being paid out. In addition, again, that will be a pact that will take the passage of this amendment to the ordinance, which basically says the same thing that's going down. We will not collect. We will retire an old warrant account. And also, a resolution acknowledging that we will enter into a cooperative funding agreement that the mayor will sign, pledging these monies to the Board of Education for 15 years, and also that we anticipate continuing payment of the abhorrent tax in event the people seek fit to redo that tax in the future. There will also be pledges for that purpose. Also, there will be an ESCO agreement entered into between the Board, Mellon Bank of New York, and the city whereby certain monies will be deposited at that financial institution so that bonds can be redeemed, our bonds can be redeemed and paid off in accordance with their term. So the immediate benefit to the city, of course, it will get $12,345,000 off books as debt, and this will free up our debt limits on that. If there are projects down the road that we will need to borrow money for funding purposes, that won't be used against us, against our debt limit. So it's something that's going to be a win-win situation for everybody, Board of Education. We've got some of the finest schools in the state, and I think it's just a real...
Council, would you go back and give me the amount on 2008B?
$2,345,000. That was paid down to $10 million.
So we need a motion to pass.
No, you've got to...
To...
Immediate consideration for this. First, you introduce the ordinance.
Yes. I make a motion to approve.
Court made the motion introduce.
Second.
Coach Cotton made the motion introduce.
He made the...
Kerry Barton made the motion, seconded his motion.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Cotton, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton.
Kerry. Here.
Kerry Barton.
Kerry Barton.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Kerry Barton to introduce pledge ordinance Number 16-0912.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance... Pledge ordinance Number 16-0912 is approved.
I offer...
No, it is introduced. I'm sorry.
Now, I will make a motion for immediate consideration, ordinance Number 161112-6.
Motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Kerry Barton, to... For immediate consideration of pledge ordinance Number 16-0912.
Is there any discussion?
Do that August number again.
Oh, did I get it wrong?
Yeah. 96.
Okay. Pledge ordinance Number 16-0912.
What happens at the top of that slide is... That 96 one is the original sales tax. Pull that slide.
But 16 is after...
There you go.
16.
There it is.
16.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The pledge ordinance Number 16-0912 is approved for immediate consideration.
I offer motion to approve ordinance Number 160912.
Second.
I've got a question. With that wording, the way it says, does that affect in any way the amount of money we give them now, you know, with that last sales tax increase that didn't include them? Or we pledging one penny tax to them in what we're pledging?
As I understand it, it's continued to 1% tax now. It's also my understanding that should the city see fit to drop the sales tax from 4% to 3%, that 1% is a minimum that you will continue to pay at least 1%.
Can I interject something?
I'm sorry. Yes.
If you look at the paragraph, the subparaphrase one, if you look at line two, where it says, comma, "by allocation to the Bruton City Board of Education," the original ordinance says to the 1975 school warrant account. Now, what Ed Hines said is they changed it from dumping it into that checkbook they've had here for 60 years and writing them a check for all that, and write that will change to get rid of that checkbook, get it out of the accounting, and they'll simply get a checkbook for sales tax, gasoline tax, and ad-orm, like the gasoline and ad-orm. They have three checks now, instead of their own checkbook sitting in the closet.
But what we're pledging, however we sent it to them, is one...
The money does not change, but the accounting basically will change. We're dumping that checkbook.
Right.
So that's good.
Right. We discussed that. But I just want to make... Since that last penny didn't apply to the schools, we're not pledging any of that last penny. Only the one penny.
Is there any further discussion?
The rest of that paragraph is exactly the same.
Okay.
Any further? I didn't catch it.
Okay, I made the motion.
Watson and Barton, or Fred Barton.
Motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton, for approval of pledge ordinance Number 16-0912. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Fred Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. The pledge ordinance Number 16-0912 is approved. And we've got the resolution.
The resolution.
Yep.
Again, this resolution goes hand in hand with the ordinance that you just passed. It just makes reference to the two series of warrants that were issued and what's going to be retired, and that we... You authorize the mayor to enter into this funding agreement, and also that, maybe something that's next page, but an ESCO agreement that we entered into with the Mellon Bank of New York, and they will be responsible for paying off... That's the last paragraph. The ESCO trust agreement, they will be responsible for redeeming and paying off by warrants in accordance with the terms thereof in the 2008 ordinance.
Did you put the first page again?
Back up.
Yeah.
I offer motion to approve Resolution Number 160912-5.
Motion by Councilman Watson, seconded by Councilman Fred Barton, to approve pledge resolution Number 16-0912-5.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Kerry Barton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Fledge resolution Number 16-0912-5 is approved.
Next item, a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce and Coastal Gateway Economic Development Authority. We were approached on 77 acres of land on Highway 31 South that's on the railroad, pretty close to Georgia Pacific, and by the Downing family, John Downing and his sister Patricia Downing, where they would donate to the city half the value of the property, and we would purchase the property for the other half of their appraised value. And they're here to make a presentation about this property to us. I'll turn it over to Mark Mann.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee, I've asked Dr. John Johnson and his staff to come before you tonight and present you with some in-depth information regarding the Downing property that Mayor Lovelace just presented to you. So at this time, I'd like to call Dr. Johnson to the podium, and I'll turn the program over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for inviting us today. Before we make a presentation on our analysis of the property in question, I did want to make you aware that we have received a $75,000 grant to do a seven-county strategic plan for economic development. This was recommended for our consideration by Mayor Lovelace several months ago, and we've been successful in achieving the grant to do that. This will be in parallel to a planning effort that is being done between Mobile County and Baldwin County through the Coastal Alabama Partnership. The same group will be doing it in our seven counties so that all nine counties will have a parallel strategic plan. The plan will be conducted by Goodwin Mills and Kaywoods Planning Division along with Robert Pittman of the Janus Institute of Atlanta. Robert Pittman of the Janus Institute of Atlanta. We're excited about what this could mean for us, but the reason I'm presenting it to you today is that we'll probably have our first public meetings on this in Escambia County in October, and I'm encouraging you and all of the people that you influence to be as active and engaging in this planning effort, because we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to put the focus of your ideas and also the focus of the plan on the City of Bruton. So I would encourage you to be active with that effort when we do, when we open that up for public meetings in October.
And immediately getting that grant, that's good.
Well, thank you for the suggestion as well, Mayor. Appreciate that. I do want to introduce my staff. You know Will Ruzick, a resident of Bruton for some time, Assistant Director for Existing Industry and Project Development, and making the formal presentation on the analysis of the property is Jess Nicholas, who is vice, vice, who is assistant, he's not, he has no vices, Assistant Director of Planning and Research for Coastal Gateway. Thank you.
Thanks for letting us come make this presentation. This is one that, we were asked to speak with the Chamber of Commerce back on September first, and this is the presentation that we gave on this property. We focused on three specific areas, the status of the rail service to the site, what could be done on that property with rail, and then we also looked at whether it would make sense to certify that site as an advantage site. For those who may not be aware of what that is, that is a sort of an upgraded marketing piece that the Economic Development Partnership of Alabama coordinates, helps get it a little bit more attention given to the sites if they are advantage site certified, meaning they've already passed through the Phase One environmental, they've already looked for airheads and other cultural items of significance. And then the third item was whether it made sense to bring this under the umbrella of the Bruton Industrial Park once the property had been secured. This doesn't show up entirely well, for those of you who are way away from this, but this red line that goes around here is the boundary line of the property. And what becomes fairly obvious, this is Georgia Pacific, this is Fritcar, this is the rail service, and then this is Highway thirty-one. There's a power line that comes out of Southern Pine, goes in a, in sort of this area, and then goes down and exits the property on the east. This is seventy-seven point seven total acres, and we feel was a very well strategically placed piece of property. One of the biggest reasons is that this is the hundred-year floodplain, and this property's not in it. There is a great deal of wetlands behind it and on the backside of the property, but nothing can be done really for development's sake on this side of the rail anyway, because access just can't get there. The railroad's not going to let you cut another access road across that track at that point. There's two or three rails wide all the way through here from where Georgia Pacific re-enters the rail until where Fritcar turns off. Property has fifteen hundred and sixty feet of linear frontage. We engaged CSX Railroad to evaluate that frontage area, what could be done with it. There's double and triple tracking for that entire frontage zone already. Unfortunately, in this case, it is not an advantage because that is basically where the trains are pulling on and off at GP and Fritcar, so there's a lot of traffic there, and they don't really want people unloading parallel to the track. But there is potential for approximately six thousand five hundred feet of loop track to be put inside the circle of that northern portion of the property. This is our in-house calculation. You need about forty-four hundred feet to pull a full car or a full train in, so sixty-five hundred feet is more than enough than you would need for that. We had also brought up the idea of maybe engaging with Fritcar for a common spur connection to the main line, because their connection feels off almost at the property line of the Downing property. Might help cut costs some on the rail. When we talked to, I also should mention that we, at the time that we presented to Mark and his staff, we had not had a full conversation with CSX about this property when that came about, about three days later, when they assigned a project manager to it. They're very excited about looking at this property, and they actually want to put boots on the ground pretty quickly and, and waltz the property as soon as possible. Then we looked at the advantage site process. There's twenty-three of them right now statewide. Only three have rail that actually go on to the property. Another two have a spur available, there's another five that has a track adjacent to the property, and then, I realized I left this out, but there's another two that have it close enough that they say they have rail and they really might not. But out of those twelve sites with some kind of rail available, only eight are in industrial parks, and only one advantage site certified industrial park has rail going up into the park. That would be your competition, but it's in Jackson County, and that's in the far northeast corner of the state, so it's not anybody around here. Presence of rail is commonly used as a filter by site consultants. They will call EDPA up and say, we need your top ten sites on rail. They don't always really need rail, but it's a way that they use to tier the system so that they know which sites to prioritize. If you don't have rail, you don't make that cut. And we like to say, there's not a lot of businesses out there that really need rail, but the ones that really need rail have to have it, and that's the only thing that they can take is a rail site. So the option is there on this property. Now, the downsides to going through advantage site certification are that EDPA right now is restricting to five per year that they'll look at. There's a lot of work in doing one of these. You usually end up with a book about that deep. EDPA received nine of those applications this year, and they decided to take six. I went and submitted an advantage site in Atmore that made that cut, and I did it at midnight. They opened it up at twelve oh one AM midnight. I submitted by twelve forty-seven AM or something like that. I was not the first one in. So they had people sitting there waiting to push the button to submit the site. Two of them tied for fifth place, same minute of the day, and that's why they decided to take the sixth one. Everybody had one in by seven in the morning. That was as much time as you had. So if people have done their homework, it's not like, okay, the process is open, now we're going to certify our site. It's, we did the work ahead of time, and we're just waiting to push the button and submit it. So that, what that means is, when you take six down from nine, that means there's three of them waiting to go in this year. That deadline for application is going to be spring two thousand seventeen, so getting on this for two thousand seventeen is probably not an option. You would have to really put it in fast forward if you did it. I would, it'd be more reasonable to shoot for two thousand and eighteen. And the last point was whether unifying the Downing property and the Bruton Industrial Park would allow the park to claim rail service. The answer to that question, which we didn't have the day we made this initial presentation, is yes. You don't have to have contiguous property lines to say that this is part of your industrial park. There's two parcels in between it and the, and the rest of what your standing industrial park has. If you don't unify it, Bruton would be the tenth in terms of size out of thirteen advantage sites in regard to size. With unification, that would be the eighth largest that has rail of some kind. So our recommendation at that time was that this property was probably the best rail site in Escambia County that was still left, and may be the best rail site on thirty-one from the Escambia County border, possibly up into North Kenneka County in terms of Coastal Gateway counties. You have to go that far to find a comparable site. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. I would just say on this particular piece of property, it's been coveted by the city for a very long time, and we are, I want to say publicly, we appreciate the Downing family and their willingness to donate all the property to the city. Do we have any announcements or comments?
If council members have none, I, I have no announcements or comments.
Make a motion to adjourn.